Good evening. I'm going to start tonight on a positive note and ask everyone to stand up and join me in closing the plug.
Pleasure to be here today, the United States of America, and to your father, which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to try to do this introduction standing up. I hope I can last long enough. If not, I'll sit down. Good evening and welcome. My name is Joseph Shea, and I'm one of the three Norfolk County Commissioners. I am the chairman. I'm joined today by my colleagues, Richard Stady, to my immediate left, Commissioner Peter Collins. This is a public hearing pursuant to the Mass General Law Chapter 34, Section 14, on the county's proposed lease of land on Fisher Street to Kearsage Energy LLC. Pursuant to Section 14, a public hearing is required in the town in which the county's property is located prior to entering into any lease. Pursuant to Section 14, a public hearing must be held at least 45 days, but not more than 60 days before entering into a lease of real estate. Also pursuant to Section 14, a public hearing is necessary only after the real estate offered for lease has been offered to both the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the town in which the property is located. I will state for the record that the properties to be offered for lease were offered to the Commonwealth on October 7, 2021, with a copy of an independent appraisal for the property, and the Commonwealth declined to lease the property at issue. I'll further state for the record that the properties to be offered for lease were offered to the town of Walpole on December 21, 2021, with a copy of an independent appraisal for both properties, and the town of Walpole did not exercise its right to accept the terms of the lease before the offer expired on March 21, 2022. I will also state for the record that the county notified in writing the Select Board of Walpole, members of the General Court representing Walpole, the Norfolk County Advisory Board on County Expenditures, and the Metropolitan Area Planning Council on December 21, 2021. The county intends to lease one property in the town of Walpole to Kearsage Energy LLC, consisting of nine acres of land to be leased from land that is owned by Norfolk County with the improvements thereon contiguous with the main campus, which consists of 202.6-plus acres of the Norfolk County Agricultural School addressed as 400 Main Street, Walpole, Mass. Said nine acres of land to be leased from portions of the farm-recorded and registered land parcels depicted on plans entitled "Plan of Land in Walpole, Mass.," "Plan Number 971 of 1969," and "Plan Book 226," and "Plan of Land in Walpole, Mass., Plan Number 69 of 1973," and "Land Court Case Plan 11282A," Lot A. The nine acres leased area will include portions of the following town of Walpole accessor maps: Apostles Number 6-169, 13-167, 13-166. I'm sorry. All of those are 13. I'll repeat that. 13-169, 13-167, and 13-166, and 18-21. Undeveloped land. Purpose for the lease: The county proposes to lease the premises to solar development Kearsage Energy for the construction and installation of a 1 megawatt AC ground-mounted mounted solar PV array. Rental rate: Kearsage will pay $31,500 per year in-ground rent with the provisions for a 1.5 annual increase in rent for the terms of the lease. The lease term is for 20 years. Reason for the lease: In recent years, Norfolk County has struggled with the fact that revenue increases from Chapter 70 funding have far outpaced by the increases in mandated school expenses, including utility costs, employee health insurance, and special education needs. While Norfolk County continues to make school funding a priority with its fiscal year operating budget and historically has exceeded its mandated contribution to Norfolk County Agricultural School, increases in Chapter 70 funding have been negligible and have been far below the rate of inflation. This operational challenge to the county is striking when these negligible revenue increases are compared, for example, in the increased cost of employee health insurance. Faced with these and other fiscal challenges, in June 2017, the county issued a Request for Qualifications, RFQ, pursuant to 225 CMR 19, for qualified renewable energy contractors or their representatives interested in implementing a performance-based renewable energy system referred to as the project with guaranteed onsite electrical generation on certain county The county's intent was one to use this project to address, meet, and exceed several of its goals, objectives, strategies, and actions concerning the county and the school's fiscal needs, including entering into a Solar Energy Management Service Agreement that supports the county and the school's essential governmental functions, policies, and goal. Number one, reducing energy costs. Number two, promoting and supporting the development of renewable energy resources. Number three, reducing the county's carbon footprint. And number four, developing a ninth through 12th grade curriculum in solar energy for the school that conforms to the common core and next generation of the state's science Please listen carefully because I am now going to outlaw -- outlaw. I'm now going to outline as carefully as possible the instructions for tonight. And again, thank you for your patience. This hearing is your opportunity to speak in favor or against the county's proposal to lease this property to Kearsage Energy LLC for the installation of solar panels, specifically at the so-called Fisher Street site. The county commissioners and the county director have been receiving comments and feedback from Walpole residents on this project for years. The county has worked to continually respond to these comments, and the commissioners appreciate your feedback. In order to ensure that everyone may have a chance to be heard on this project, we've asked that members of public and local elected and appointed officials sign in at the door. We'll call each person in turn and ask that you approach the microphone to make your comments. We will also take comments via Zoom. We'll go through those who have signed up to speak here in person, and then ask those who wish to make public comment from the Zoom indicate their intentions to do so by raising their hands. Also, we ask that you focus your comments on why you're here and why you're in favor or against this proposed lease on Fisher Street. We ask that you restrict your comments to three minutes to allow everyone a chance to speak. The purpose of this public hearing is to gather information and feedback from the Walpole community for the proposed lease. We do want to hear from you. However, no one from the county or Kearsage will be asking any questions you may have. Rather, we intend to lay out the proposed plan as currently envisioned, and after receiving your input, we may alter our plans before we finalize the lease with Kearsage. Thank you. I would now like to introduce Mr. Andrew Bernstein to give his presentation. He has his team here from Kearsage Energy. Thank you very much. Andrew.
Can everyone hear me? Yeah. Okay. Great. Thank you. The slides are up on the screen here. They will be posted. A lot of them are similar to the several other meetings that we've done. Next slide. Thanks. Bill. So this is a new approach and a new project. We've been working on this for over four years. This integrates into the original Norfolk County and Aggie Sustainability Initiative. It's extending the educational component of the North Street project. It's adding to experiments with the pollinator species, and it fits with the existing arrays that have been completed so far. It's a cutting edge. It positions the Aggie as a leader in sustainability and agricultural takes. It's an excellent fit with the Aggie curriculum. It'll be a learning experience from design to completion to operations. It's also a marketing and partnering opportunity, integration with the University of Massachusetts at Amherst, partner with construction contractors to offer internships through construction phase with eligible students and graduates. It involves multiple disciplines at the Aggie: forestry, environmental science, sustainable farming. Finally, it expands the available land for hay and agriculture without destroying any of the land and provides energy, rent, and restoration of the proposed location. The environmental benefits: This 1 megawatt AC, in terms of the U.S. EPA Greenhouse Gas Equivalence Calculator, has carbon offsets and equivalencies of 1,769 tons of carbon dioxide annually, which also is the equivalent to saving 1,967 acres of tree land every year, vastly offsetting, or offsetting, excuse me, the four acres of second-growth trees that would need to be removed. If you look at the other three equivalencies here, taking 349 passenger vehicles off the road, it'll supply enough power for the electricity use of 292 homes and/or consuming 180,000 gallons of gasoline annually. The Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources has set up this program. They think this is an excellent opportunity to take existing agricultural land and put solar on it, as well as grow crops and be one of the leaders in the United States in encouraging this dual-use program. The Ag-Solar is a completely new offering. There are several that are already built in Massachusetts. It's built on current farmland. It's a raised structure that allows for agricultural workers or machinery to get underneath it. You can't have more than 50% shading of the crops below it. A crop and farming plan has to be endorsed by Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources and UMass Amherst to ensure viability, an ongoing monitoring and research program delivering an annual scorecard to the DOER at UMass Amherst and M Dar. Following initial discussions with M Dar and DOER and the Aggie, there is significant teaching and research potential collaboration. So we've had five years of consultation, discussion, sidewalks, and refinement with the working group and other stakeholders culminating in the latest revision, which I'll show shortly. If you look at the left side, you can see what was started in the backwoods, what we've looked at Gould Street, and that was looked at in the third quarter of 2017. Then we looked at Gould and Fisher Street in 2018. Then we refined it and made it smaller in the Fisher Street Woods. And then we had another version of the Fisher Street Woods called Fisher Street Woods Version 2 and Version 3 in 2020 with different abilities where we could put the project. We moved it away from the back Fisher Street Woods, as that would have had ramifications for the haunted hayride, as well as taking down more than seven acres of trees, and we wanted to reduce that through requests. Finally, we got into May 2022, where we refined the site, we've cut back on trees, we've made the site smaller, we haven't changed the rent that will be payable. And finally --
Can you flip to the next one, please?
So this is the latest one, as of a week ago. The minimum distance from the eastern boundary was increased from approximately 130 to 150 feet to the property lines. We've added in screening, which will go around and all the abutters. We've taken out another row of panels, and we'll adjust this once the project is fully designed. Kearsage will add screening as needed during the site plan review. The array is located outside of all environmental buffer zones. There's no endangered species. They'll allow for continued use of the fields and trees for school activities. We've measured the heights of the hay wagon. There's no change. They can actually go under the array, but they can go around it as well. So the annual hayride will not be affected, cross-country training and events will not be affected, and you'll have a larger area for farming and hay production. The details, the dimensions: The array would sit on seven acres, overlapping four and a half acres of the existing field. There are no fences. The total farmable space would increase approximately from nine acres to 13 acres. The minimum setbacks would be a minimum of 100 feet from all property boundaries, larger setbacks close to 200 feet in the southern wooded area. The row spacing height and tracking: The final row height and spacing will be based on farm equipment needs, but we've now measured it with all the existing equipment. Currently, the panel pivot point will be set to 11 feet high, and there'll be 20 feet between rows. We'll use a tracking system, which means the panels will turn to follow the sun to increase production and minimize shade, so they can be turned up at night, rather turned up at night if there's snow and other issues. It allows for equipment movement as well by turning it up. There'll be turnarounds of 50 feet minimum at either end of the rows to make sure that the equipment can get by. There'll be hands-on learning opportunities for how this works, how you build it, what crops can go underneath it, as well as the overall design. Tracking system will be one of the first tracking systems in Massachusetts. There's a few now, but most of them are what are called fixed arrays. As I said, the rows will be wide enough for equipment. They'll be sized to allow equipment under panels. Working with the Aggie forestry team, we've identified four acres of second-growth harvestable evergreen timber woods would be removed. Important plantings in the southeast have been identified and will be avoided. The Aggie solar opportunity revised. We made it smaller. The AC size is the same, the DC size, which determines the overall size of the project, will be reduced to allow for increased setbacks. So this is a new version as of August 18. There'll be no fence lines around the array. The existing hay operations would continue and would be expanded to experimental cropping. Kearsage will collaborate with the Aggie team and students in designing the array to suit the cropping plan, as well as bringing outside experts, including consultants, which we presented to the working group and chosen one. We have collaboration with UMass, M Dar, DOER on the opportunity. You could potentially see published results and papers. And an Ag school-style facility will position the Norfolk Aggie as a leader in studying and promoting progressive agricultural education and renewables. It'll be the first Ag school, as far as we know, certainly on the northeast and probably in the country, to be doing this.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you. Two more points I omitted. When you come up to speak, and I will call you first, and then we'll do the other folks. If you want on the Zoom. You must give your address, and please try to keep it to three minutes. And I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name. So number one on my list here is Roy --
Nopel.
Nopel, just like it's written. Roy Nopel. Come on up, Roy, and this is a live mic, and anything that happens at this hearing is recorded by law, so thank you.
Yeah, now we're talking, I hope. Hello? It's not working? I've done this before. Don't -- hey, don't start the three minutes. Can someone, like, fix that, please?
Is it on?
Is it working?
Yeah.
Sorry. Sorry. No echo effect. Oh, thank you. I owe you one. All right. Take two. Sorry to disturb you there. It's okay. My name is Roy Nopel, 44, Wheelock Avenue in Norwood. However, I'm a two-time resident of North Street and Walpole. I almost feel like I should be talking to the audience here, so I am speaking with you and for you. So I am the president of the Friends of Adams Farm, which is a neighbor to the proposed Also, I'm an employee of the state's largest conservation and recreation department. We cover 450,000 acres of this state. Some of them are roads, but the majority is land. You might say I know something about the beauty of the natural land. The current site planned for solar polar power panels will cause a loss of local natural and agricultural habitats. But I have a feeling the folks behind me will say the same thing, so let's move on.
Excuse me. Can you turn around?
I'd love to. May I? Or is that a no-no?
Visual scope.
Am I outlawed?
Can't hear you.
Oh, he wants me to turn around so I could -- Okay, thank you very much. You're a nice chairman. I like you. I'm used to adversity. Again, I hope this is working. All right. Thank you, sir. Forgive me for the backside. Can we start at three minutes? Hey, everyone. All right, actually, it's a very serious topic, so thank you for, you know, breaking me in here. Three minutes, huh? So the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, in December of 2014, Model Z, Model Zoning Statement quotes, "Citing preferences where a solar facility is sited, as well as the placement of the site once selected, is an important consideration." They strongly discourage locations, I repeat, they strongly discourage locations that result in a significant loss of land and natural resources, including farm and forest land, and encourages rooftop sitting, of which your institution has done a fabulous job, I got to tell you, with all due respect, and choosing locations in industrial and commercial districts on vacant, as well as disturbed land. I reached out to someone at -- I can't say who, what it was, but it was Mass Audubon. They've done a phenomenal job at solar work, and I'm happy to give you their name and numbers in case you don't know it. They recommend rooftops, their first choice, again, awesome job here, brownfield dump sites, sites that are contaminated. For some reason, they call them brown sites. I don't know why. Parking lots, and ideally, no cutting of trees. Getting back to Adams Farm, the board that I'm the chair of, and we don't have three-minute limitations whenever the public is invited, also have voted down this project, with all due respect. And I'm mad as hell. Thank you very much. I think I've met under three minutes.
Next is Nathan Wazaroos. Is that correct?
My name is Nathan Wazaroos Faniff. I live at 681 Street, Bellingham. I just want to start off by thanking the county for allowing me to have this opportunity to speak about this important topic. Some of you may recognize me from my over two years of work as a student and alumni that I have put into protecting our precious campus. In case you don't know me, I'm a resident of Norfolk County and also a Norfolk Aggie alumni, class of 2021. Throughout my involvement, I have been in contact with local, county, state, and federal agencies in order to fight for something that we shouldn't even have to be fighting for here today. I want to say I am not against solar panels. What I am against is the use of them where agricultural land, public spaces, forests, or important ecological areas will be disturbed. These proposed locations that Kearsage continues to propose have improved slightly, but not enough. It's still the issue of the bald eagle that has and continues to hunt on the school grounds and in the area that Kearsage proposed. There's also the issue of a documented possible vulnerable and close proximity to this location, as well as a large opposition to this project in general. Ever since the beginning of this project, many of the staff and students at Norfolk Aggie were not even aware of the proposed solar fund until just over two years ago. They have been completely left in the dark about it, and despite the fact that it would be constructed right on the land that they work on or go into school on. Trees are an invaluable resource on earth. They provide -- they improve our air quality, help control our climate, conserve water, support wildlife, provide oxygen, take pollutants out of the air, among many other things. According to USDA, one acre of forest takes out about six tons of carbon dioxide and puts out about four tons of oxygen, providing the annual needs of 18 people. In addition, trees also provide shelter and habitat to numerous people and wildlife, including but not limited to bald eagles. Though there is no eagle currently nesting at the Aggie, there is a breeding pair of eagles that currently recently had an eaglet that do hunt on the campus regularly. These sightings have been documented and reported to state and federal agencies. Has there been a wildlife plant study to show that there are no endangered species or species of concern? As of the last time I spoke to the Endangered Species Review Assistant of the Mass Department of Fish and Wildlife, there was not one. So how can we, anyone, be sure that there are no species that are endangered or of concern? Question is, why is Kearsage and the county so focused on using the Aggie's land? Why have they not looked at other locations that they could instead carry this project out at? Wait, they supposedly have looked at other locations for the project, but they just pushed them all to the side. Yes, they have and continue to say it's for the educational benefit, but as an alumni, I can assure you, that cannot be any further from the truth. I, along with many others, have never been able to get a straight answer on what the educational benefit will be. All my previous work that has been done for the solar canopy that could have been done by students, Kearsage instead hired outside companies, and when confronted, they could not give an answer of why they didn't use students' help. In addition, I have been in contact with state officials regarding the solar project, and they were unable to find any record of any proposals from Kearsage for the Aggie. My last point is I want to remind everyone that the county commissioners are elected officials whose purpose is to serve in the best interest of their constituents. The residents may have been very clear in their opposition for the project. They need to remember who they answer to and walk away from this project. I know Representative Paul McMurtry and State Senator Paul Feeney currently have a bill and legislature that could put a stop to this project. I am asking the county to use them as an example of what to do as elected officials and to walk away from this project now before it goes any further. I know who I will be voting for, and it isn't Mr. Collins, as he has shown no interest in listening to the people of Norfolk County.
Before Angela speaks, may I ask if the court would shut their computers and listen?
Listen.
I think that would be really important because --
We're taking notes on our computers.
Okay. I have a chemistry book like that because it doesn't, I really want everyone --
Why aren't you just recording on your computer? So it's all right. It's a little more important than that. You didn't want --
There's a lady in the back. I have a question. Let me come and answer.
Angelina Roggerio. I'm from Walpole.
Speak up, please. We can't hear you.
Please address Angela.
I'm from Walpole. Hello, my name is Angie. I'm a student here at Norfolk Aggie, and I'm against the installation of these solar panels. We have a beautiful campus here, and I don't want to see that change. I think the solar panels we have in the parking area are enough, and that we should leave the trees and wildlife alone. There is plenty of open space. Why do acres of trees and wildlife have to be cut down? and with anyone or any, anything involving themselves with the school we go to. However, many of the students don't even know about this project, as it has not been talked about collectively by the superintendent, principal, or the head of the vocational department. I find that a bit odd. I only know about it because Mr. Kane and Mr. Stone talked about it in my forestry class. Alls I ask is for this to be a fair vote for the Aggie community, as this is the school we can, we come to learn at every day.
Sue Rogario.
Sue Rogero, 277 High Plains Street, Walpole, Mass, a mile and a half away from this school. I did speak back in May, and I did have a better talk back then, even though I don't think it really mattered. Now, I want to see a show of hands of how many people showed up for the question-and-answer meeting that happened since May. Anyone? Because I didn't hear anything about that meeting. And that really got me mad when I walked into the door, okay? What should be most important here, I don't think is really even taken into account. The people that live here, that abut this property, okay? The children that go here, the teachers, the faculty that work here, and the animals that live here. Now, the last time I spoke, I had certain heavy metals and different toxic materials that are released from these solar panels. Now, I did my homework back then. Those panels that are installed are old, okay? Now they have new panels. What panels are being installed here? I can't ask. I don't know. What happens in 20 years when those old panels, because I'm assuming that's what's being installed, are breaking down and breaking down and breaking down? When their, when their time is done here, when they've made their money, okay? Who uninstalls those panels? Are they just left here to further go into the ground and make the water toxic? I mean, I had specific questions last time, and I couldn't ask, and now, at the same time, I can't ask. I didn't know about that meeting. I am not against solar panels. I'm just against solar panels here. I've driven all around the state, west, south. I see solar panels in the middle of highways. I think that's great. I have photographs. I don't care what type of panels they use. I hope they work. I don't think it's right here. And it's unfortunate that we can't ask questions, because I'd like to know. Are we using the most up-to-date panels? What's going to happen once the lease is gone? Are we going to have to deal with this? What are we going to do with that? Who's going to want it? It's toxic material that's going to go into our water. So, I just wish that Kearsage Norfolk County, Norfolk County Agracational would take this into consideration. This is important stuff. It's not a business deal. There's many people that are involved here that are going to be drastically affected for years to come. Thank you.
Emmett Walsh is next. Emmett Walsh, please.
I live at 1057 Main Street in Walpole. Just wanted, I'm up here mostly just to voice that I'm against this, against it for a bunch of reasons. I think even if it was, I did believe it was absolutely a necessity and a good thing. The way it's been done is shameful. I think that Sue was just up here, and she said that it wasn't a business deal. It shouldn't be a business deal, but that's exactly what I think it is. For whatever reason, the county or whatever in Kearsage, and you know, I hate to be conspiratorial. You always wonder what, who else's benefit, because it's being couched that it's benefit for the school and the kids and for the children, and they didn't, they could have thrown my orange apple pie in there, you know, to be even a little bit more funny, but that's what, that's what it's being couched at. They say they're getting $30,000 a year. I mentioned this the last time. $30,000 a year, that's $3,000 a month or whatever, give or take, and we're getting nine, and it's nine, nine acres of land. So I wonder how good a business deal it is for the town, and that's going to get $30,000 for the schools, again. I think they could outright sell it and do better for the schools, and I don't believe that's the reason at all anyways. And the educational aspect, they say it's for, it'll be educational for the kids. As Angie pointed out, they already have solar panels on, on the property. They can bring them there. Back in my day, a million years ago, we went on field trips too, so bring them to every kind of power plant in America and every kind of solar place you possibly could. It doesn't have to be right where they go. And then, and the company that you can't speak to tells us it won't be so bad. The hayride can go right under these things. They can go right under skyscrapers too, but we don't need to. We don't want to do downtown Boston with the hayride. It's a little plot of land, and you know, it's also put that, how well it's going to be, help the schools, it's also somehow it's going to solve the world. Solar panels, solar, solar energy, all those things are all great things. This little nine acre of land, in this little area, in a beautiful place, dedicated an agricultural school for kids, is not where it should be. No way, no. Like Sue said, and everybody else will probably say, put it, somebody mentioned the last time, perhaps it could go over by the state prison at Walpole, or it can go in the middle of highways, it can go anywhere else, but no. And then they tell, as a nod from the company to the people, they're going to have to look at these solar panels like it was on the sidewalk. We're going to put up big screens for you, you know? See, now you can look out there, instead of seeing the solar panels, you get to see screens, like it's some kind of a good thing. It isn't. Whatever the values of it, whatever the benefits, I don't trust that it's a good business deal. I don't really trust the reasons they're saying it's being done, and it shouldn't be done there. Thank you.
Steven Hearn, hold on. Hearn, Hearn. Steve. How's that? Steven, do your next. Thank you. Steve Hearn, I'm from Walnut Street in Walpole. I want to echo many of the things that have been said already. We heard a lot of statistics. By the way, I'm a fan of solar, and I love technical things, and it's interesting to hear how these might work. I have concerns about solar panels that pivot from the center. I work in an industry where we're sensitive to wind, and if the wind is catching them in a certain way, they may not stay on those nine acres, but you may find them in your front yards. So, it is one thing to see solar panels solidly anchored, but it's another thing to see them they can flap. We'll probably be told there's a computer program that adjusts them and anticipates all winds. That's a concern I have. I heard a lot of statistics about how much gasoline will be saved, how much carbon and things like that. What's interesting, in yesterday's paper, the city of Newton, I'm not a fan of them, but they've started to come up with a regulation that says, to take down a tree on your own property, you've got to go through us and our police powers. Now, I'm not a fan of police powers, but there's got to be some good reasons why the trees need to stay up. And somebody needs to cite those statistics as to how many carbon offsets those produce, and how many tons of air those clean for all of us. So there is a trade-off here, if we go from one to the other. Like many, I'm concerned about what's the bill at the end? How do they get taken down? You know, is one company, and this happens in industry, going to be sold to another company, and then to a third company? And maybe some of the fine things that have been said here in earnest may, may not come to fruition. So I have a question. Has a bond been posted? Is that part? I can't ask the question this way, so I'm asking, does anybody know if a bond is being posted to restore the land to its original condition at the end of the lease?
I'm not a board trustee of this school. I haven't heard of it.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing was, I just heard a quote when this was starting, that we are being heard, quote, "before we finalize the lease." This is a done deal, you know? But it was a good opportunity to get out tonight and talk amongst each other. Thank you. Grace McCarthy, please. Grace.
Hi, I'm Grace McCarthy from 387 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, and I'm an alumni of the class of 2020. And I was a two-year state officer for the Massachusetts FFA Association. So I'm here today wondering, what are we doing about good safety protocols? How are we going to have another access road and not know who's coming in and out? How are we going to keep these students and staff safe to day-to-day? Why are we doing this if we don't have good safety protocols instead? And that's it.
Next is Cassandra Ryan, please. Cassandra.
My name's Cassandra Ryan. I'm class of 2021. I'm an alumni. I recently came back from basic training, and I currently work in the arbor industry. I saw when they said they talked to Aggie forestry officials, Mr. Kennedy, you shook your head. Did they not talk to you? So, what forestry officials did they talk to? Who did they talk to from the Aggie about educational benefits and about the forestry benefits? When the solar garage was put up in the parking lot, they replaced every single tree that they cut down. What trees are you replacing for this nine acres? Are you replacing them at all? Are they going up, or are they just disappearing?
I hope I'm right on this one. Aileen Cohen, is that correct?
Aileen. Emily? Aileen. Like Eileen with an A.
Okay, Eileen, I'm sorry. Aileen.
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 Yep. 10 Philip Road, Walpole, just through the trees that we're talking about. So, hi, everyone. My name's Aileen. I've been a resident of the Philip Road, Susan Drive neighborhood, which borders the Aggie woodlands and fields since 2003. I spent my formative years running barefoot through the fields and forest areas at this proposed solar site, experiencing a pure and rugged childhood that seems to be lost to the American conscious. I would like to continue on to describe the joys of living in such natural beauty. However, the county has made it abundantly clear that they do not care to listen to or to consider the lived experiences of their constituents in relation to the Aggie property. So I'll take a different approach and discuss politics, everyone's favorite. County commissioners, where are your structured and anonymous survey data points demonstrating community support for this project? Based on what I have heard in the community, the citizens of Walpole and the student and teacher families of the Aggie have made it abundantly clear that they do not want this solar project placed on this field. Through the progressing solar deal with Kearsage, county representatives clearly demonstrate to citizens that they are more invested in personal and political advancement through financial deals than to uphold the honor and oath each county official made to represent the members of this community. Secondly, I'll pull my own personal and communal frustrations out of the conversation and focus purely on financials and logistics. Norfolk County has 12 other properties beyond the Aggie fields and woods to consider for this project, and yet, we still continue to put the time, money, and effort into pursuing a land option that constituents do not want. You have faced a lawsuit at the North Street site for solar panels, and will continue to face lawsuits from the town of Walpole with this current proposal. But why? How does the cost of this legal and logistical battle outweigh the cost of surveying 12 other options for solar panels? How can you justify these expenses to yourselves and to the rest of the citizens of Norfolk County? And for what significant financial benefit? The school could generate more revenue from two out-of-district student enrollments than the annual lease from Kearsage for the solar panels in the Aggie field. Why? The proposed solar project at the Aggie is a logistical, financial, social, and environmental loss for Norfolk County. To wrap up my turn here at the lectern, I'd like to emphasize a social shift occurring amongst our younger ranks here in Massachusetts. We've watched the political, social, and environmental spirals of the past several years. We are disheartened, we're discouraged, and if Norfolk County continues to pursue the path of political gain over, over community and environmental wellness, we, the young people of this community, will not stay, and we will go. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I am Matt Sheehan. I am a Dedham resident and a proud alumni of Norfolk County Agricultural High School, class of 2003. I'm also a member of the Board of Trustees here at the school. This solar project is contentious and has sparked controversy for years, and I'd like to address my feelings and opinions about it this evening. First, I'd like to point out that Mark Parish and Richard Stady were not on the board when the solar project came to fruition in 2017. Many of the folks who voted in favor of this project are no longer on our board or are not present this evening. In 2017, the board was approached by Peter Kane and some students who wanted to reduce the school's carbon footprint. I support this idea. What I thought we were getting was solar installations on the roofs, a small ground array. Later, we also had the solar carport installed, which I also supported. What I thought the project was and what the reality is are two different things. There are many stakeholders involved in this project, and in no particular order, we have the student body, parents, faculty, other staff at Norfolk Aggie, alumni, residents of the town of Walpole, and anyone else who's a taxpayer in Norfolk County. In September 2020, my friends, who are also alumni, informed me that this project was much bigger than I thought it was. The entire project would destroy almost 30 acres of our land. I could no longer support the project as it was modified. I don't know precisely when or how this project became so large. I'd like to know what happened during the summer of 2020. It was brought to my attention by fellow alumni, again, who live in the town of Walpole. We had a virtual town hearing on November 19th, 2020, just like this one, but it was virtual, for phase three of this project. The response to destroying 20 acres of green space on North Street was overwhelmingly negative. Not to mention, this land is home to soils of statewide importance, and this was an evaluation done by the National Geologic Survey. It came down to a five-to-two vote to go forward with the project. I watched as my colleagues on the board ignored the stakeholders. Myself and Commissioner Stady were no votes on that project. The town of Walpole and the Walpole Preservation Alliance are instrumental in delaying this portion of the project. The same colleagues I mentioned before went ahead and decided to sue both the town of Walpole and the Walpole Preservation Alliance, without taxpayer dollars. There was never an official public vote to go forward with this lawsuit. Here we are today, phase four of this project. This land serves as a classroom for our students. The haunted hayride is a staple, not only at Norfolk Aggie, but in the entire county. It has been around for 30 years and provided joy and camaraderie, not only for our students, but for anyone who is a patron. You cannot run the haunted hayride underneath a solar farm. Anyone who says we can has no idea what they're talking about. I don't care what these people say about alternative routes for the hayride. There are other locations where we can put these solar panels that wouldn't ruin something so special and important as the students' haunted hayride. Both Rick Fitzpatrick, who was our former business manager, and Peter Collins said to me at Rick's last meeting at this school, wow, who knew so many people cared about the woods and the space behind the school? And both admitted they wish things could be different with this project. I was furious after this.
You can have my time. No questions. Come on. It's going well, let's keep it going.
I'm the only person on this board who went to this school. These folks are supposed to be doing what's best for our school. The haunted hayride made $40,000 last year. That is far more than the $31,000 the county plans on making for the lease of the land. This entire ground-mounted portion of this project is strictly for a land lease. The location is also home to various species of local wildlife, who will be totally upended as a result. The residents who abut this project... The residents who bought this property are also against this portion of the project. They were notified about this project just a few months ago. I'd like to remind everyone that we started talking about this project in 2017. There are other places to put these solar panels. I totally support solar panels on existing infrastructure. We could easily use every county municipal parking lot as a carport, and we could even put in hookups so people can plug in their electric vehicles. All right? Two more minutes. This project as is will ruin Norfolk Aggie. The county has not had a real solar firm come in for a consultation on this project. When I asked this question, the response was some guy named Tim from Westwood. I find this interesting, considering the same county government has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars using the Abrams Group and the Ripples Group to explain to them how to operate their government. If this project is so amazing, why isn't it publicized as much as possible? Lastly, over 7,000 acres of forest and fields in Massachusetts have been destroyed in the name of ground-mounted solar projects. That's 305 million square feet. We are absolutely setting a dangerous precedent. To quote Meg Sheehan, who's an environmental attorney who I'm not related to, from her article in the Boston Globe magazine, "Green energy is great to pursue where it fits, but it should not be green energy at all costs. We should not be destroying the planet to save it. It's not too late to stop this project. If you don't agree with it, vote these people out. We cannot let these people pave what is paradise to so many and put up a parking lot."
I said that we're doing well, and I believe we're doing very well. This is a public hearing. We're doing the best we can to stay to the rules. I have been given some latitude on speaking. But to talk about voting people in or out when there's an election, eight to nine weeks away, and I think the three candidates are in this room, I'm going to rule that out of order. You can talk about the cable, but this is not a public hearing about the election. Thank you. Kate Watson. Kate, please. David Johnson. David Johnson. William T. Hamilton.
Please excuse me. I want to talk to the people making this decision. The school is not growing food when people are starving. Why? Is it because fertilizer are not available? Because Communist China and Russia control it? The education of electric-producing solar panels is not, in my opinion, agricultural. You are locating hazardous materials in the Water Resource Protection Overlay District, Area 4, of Walpole's water supply, drinking water supply. These hazardous materials in these solar panels are a threat to our future drinking water, whether it takes five, 10, 15, 20 years for these hazardous materials to make it to the wellheads. Some of these hazardous materials have made it to the wellheads in School Meadow Brook. And there is no treatment to remove these hazardous materials from School Meadow Brook. They're in parts per trillion, and we're told it's safe to drink. But all day long, I see advertisements for people who went through Camp Lejeune that they are suffering from water pollution that they had in the 50s and 60s and 70s and 80s. Germany is going back to solar. They just announced that. They're going back to coal. They're going to have coal-generating plants for their electricity. They're not going to go with solar. China is building five new solar coal plants. None of them are solar. And they manufacture all the solar products. Days ago, China's warships blocked our warships from returning to their home ports in the Solomon Islands. The United States Marines 1st Division was attacked by Communist China in North Korea at the Chosan Reservoir. And again, in Sector 1 in Vietnam, when the Marine Base Khe Son, manned by the 1st Marine Division, was surrounded by North Vietnamese military and supported by the Chinese Communists. In my opinion, risking the loss of Walpole's drinking water to enrich Communist China is a very objectionable idea. And I won't mention political. However...
I do want to say that I understand people enjoy the haunted hayride. But the ghosts have told me they're not compensated. Therefore, they're treated like slave labor in Communist China.
Good evening. My name is Paul Yorcas. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Paul Yorcas. I reside at 7 Independence Lane in Medway. And I have six points that I would like to share tonight. First of all, I think every person in this room cares about Norfolk Aggie. The problem is, some of us care in a totally different manner. I am opposed to the Kirsaj proposal. I support solar energy. I believe in the best, I believe the best approach, and I mean the best approach, is for the commissioners, these three gentlemen, to develop and implement a comprehensive energy and energy sustainability program looking at all county buildings, land, and vehicles. And that has not been discussed at any meeting I've attended or watched, and there's no mention of that on the county's website. Today, an out-of-county student is charged, their school district has charged $24,572. That's today. That's approximately $49,000 for two students to be educated here instead of $31,500, which is chump change for this land in my professional judgment. Mr. Shea, in all due respect to you and your capacity as chair, I disagree strongly with the words you used this evening, and words matter. In your comment, you said that the comments will be considered before the lease is finalized. Well, I can tell you how to finalize the lease tonight. Don't sign it. Eliminate it. It's not in the best interest of the county. It's not in the best interest of Walpole. And I think it's very unfortunate that you use those words. To indicate that this is a done deal. Until every person speaks this evening, until you and your staff have an opportunity to review all the comments, there is no done deal. The decision should not have been made already. The county, this is my last point. The county has many buildings, parking lots, and all of those sites should be considered as part of a comprehensive plan, as I indicated earlier. Solar is not a Walpole responsibility and is not a Norfolk Aggie responsibility. It is a county responsibility. And we need to look at it in a comprehensive way instead of a targeted way at this wonderful campus and facility. Thank you very much.
Red Morris, please.
Hello, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Red Morris. I'm currently the president of the Norfolk Aggie Alumni Association. I was asked to speak on behalf of thousands of Aggie grads that oppose this project. First off, as in the past, I'd like to say in general that the alumni, as well as the Alumni Association, are not against solar or renewable energy as we are supportive of the school's efforts to reduce their carbon footprint. But what we are opposed of is the location of this project and the destruction of valuable forest and agricultural land on the school campus. Having been affiliated with the school for over 45 years, first as a student, then as a staff member for 20 years, and now president of the Alumni Association for over 12, I know firsthand what this land means to the students, staff, curriculum, the county, the community of Norfolk Aggie, and the town of Walpole in Norfolk County. Again, I would like to say that a solar project of this size, 30-plus acres, to be educationally under the Dover Amendment, in my opinion, is ridiculous. A much smaller solar, a 1-acre solar field, would serve the same purpose and would probably be more accessible and educational to the students. Also, access to the project of this size will most likely be off-limits to the student population most of the time due to fencing requirements and to help protect the students as well as the equipment from vandalism. Since this last meeting, I have heard board members say that the staff, student, faculty are all in favor of this project. I disagree. Over the past month and a half, I've probably made 600 telephone calls to staff, students, alumni, and faculty members. The majority of them are against this, they're not against solar, but they are against the placement of this project. I do know that the project has been shifted to create a bigger buffer zone for the residents that are but the main campus project, but still doesn't fix the problem that is still in their backyards and will significantly lower their property values. Also, the shifting of this project, it will also destroy more tree and field space that is vital to the educational programs for the school. By doing this shift, this will most likely end a longtime Aggie tradition of the hayride that last year brought in, as Matt said, over $40,000 that helps the students pay for the prom, yearbook, and other expenses affiliated with school activities. The site on the main campus holds much more education value the way it is than just using it for limited use for solar and possibly sheep production as has been proposed. The main campus area is used by all four agricultural majors on a daily basis as outdoor classrooms, from climbing trees, environmental studies, equine riding trails, to equipment operations, which will not be available for use if the project is carried out and the area fenced off. Having been around the Aggie for so many years, I've been part of and have seen many changes, some good, some bad. But personally, I have to agree with most of the alumni, school staff, and students that we, as an alumni board, have spoken to that this would definitely be a bad decision for the school and county if moved forward. If past chairman and trustee of the board, Dave Laido, was still with us, I know he would be adamantly opposed to this project. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Justin Kennedy. I'm a resident of Bellingham, Mass, 20 John Alden Circle. Last time we were in this situation, I spoke about my unique relationship with the Aggie Woods. I am an alumni, graduated in '97. I'd like to echo on what Mr. Sheehan said in regards to stakeholders. Each and every one of you out here is a stakeholder, okay? Teachers here at the school are stakeholders. Students, alumni at the school are stakeholders. We have stockholders. Okay? Listen to the people. All right? That's the message I gave last time? Listen to the people, listen to the students, do what is right. No one person stood up here today, all right, in favor of this project. Thank you.
Tara Coller.
First and foremost, I hate standing in front of the public, and I'm probably going to be shaking. My name is Tara Coller, and I'm from Whitman, Mass. I'm an out-of-district student mom. My son Brady is an incoming senior tomorrow morning. I have not done my research on solar and what it does and what the environmental hazards are to people and what the benefits could be. I have no idea. I know that they're good to put in other places. But what I can talk about is 11 feet is not high enough to put a tractor with hay with people standing and letting any one of our children, grandchildren, ride underneath them. Like, I think you said, they're tilted. If they're tilted in such a way that doesn't allow the hayride to go under, the hayride won't exist. See, I'm shaking. I can tell you, so my son, again, his name is Brady. He's a senior. He's an identical twin. He comes here, his brother goes to Whitman. I can show this picture, my son building a pirate ship with his own two hands. See, I'm shaking. For one of the sights. It was so great that, I think they kept it for this year. He started here as a freshman, did, you know, what, six months before the pandemic ruined our lives. He created his friend circle, which is at least 10 kids right now that he talks to and hangs out with every day. You probably know Brady. It is the way that the kids create their social circles when they come here, especially from out of district when they don't know anybody. Most of his friends are from Sharon, Walpole, Rentham, out this way. I've spent many days driving, an hour, to let him do what he does here at Aggie. Matt, you said it raised $40,000. I think it was actually 42 per emails we got. The kids made t-shirts, so the educational factor is far beyond what they'll learn from solar. They learn how to make t-shirts, the artwork created to make them. They learn to do this. They give their time after school, when they could be working and making money, going home to their families. They, oh gosh, I didn't plan what I was going to say. They, the educational factor, there's so many things the kids learned. But again, I think you guys said it's going to bring $31,000. Well, a bunch of 14- to 16-year-olds brought in $42,000. So if you can match that or do more, you won't match it. No politician, no adult can do what these kids have done and what it's done for the kids. Again, $42,000, and I'm only hearing 31 from you guys. And I say no. I don't have a vote in the matter because I'm out of district, but no.
John Burnett Jr.
Good evening. John Burnett, 18, Burton Ave, right down the street from her, Whitman, Mass. Out of town student. This year, 50 years ago, I entered this school as a freshman. One of the best students. One of the best things I ever did in my life. My mom and dad were so, it's unbelievable. But we're here tonight on an issue. Everybody here before me spoke, as Matt said, all negative, no positive. There's a couple of things, I think, as human beings, that we have to do, and that's one thing, that they can't teach here, can't teach at home, can't teach in any top college in the world, is common sense. And I think that's what you board have to use at this moment tonight. And we have spoke, hold on, hold on. They've given us the time, I thank you for the time. I was here the last time, I raised hell, because still, I'm going to call the District Attorney's Office tomorrow. I want to know what a law is about an open meeting. I talked to a couple legislators, they said, no, John, it's got to be answers and questions. That's your cohort. But I am calling District Attorney's Office tomorrow to question that again, because I want to do my homework. Because I think, before anybody can make a decision on this project, we need more answers. And it's a fact, they've asked you. And here we are, May, June, July, August, still no answers on some of the questions. But I'm going to tell you something, I'm a businessman, I'm going to put myself in their seats. They made some legal situations, and I think they made them too soon. I think what they can't tell you tonight, they're in some legality problems, and they have to make some decisions tonight. And that's their problem. They're the legislators, they're the ones that run our country. As far as I'm considering, I call United States government the largest nonprofit organization in the world that's mismanaged. That's what I call our United States, because it is. They spend more money and don't know how to handle it. They don't use common sense when they make decisions. Here we go, again, putting money to try to bandit, put a Band-Aid on the situation. Yes, you guys are in a shortage. I worked with Norfolk County for a long time on different situations, I understand where you're coming from. I know you're shortage in education. But there's a way that we can find extra money someplace else besides a solar panel. If you're asking me that you're taking ten acres of my land, and you're only getting thirty-one thousand five hundred for rental, take a hike, okay? I have a building, I make fourteen grand a month off of it, renting it. Fourteen, I own it, I rent it, fourteen grand a month, and it's, the building's probably twice the size of this building here. But it's a different situation. So I think there might be another deal that we don't know about. I think there might be a situation that they might get so much money from the energy that they're developing. So this is things we don't know. This is why I would rather see, I don't care if you want to do behind-the-door meeting, let us know this stuff. You know, the biggest thing with politics in the world today, we don't communicate. We hide too many things. And I think this is what happens with politics. And I'm not picking on anyone else, I'm picking on the whole society of how we do this. And I think that if you guys were more transparent right from the beginning on this project, I think you would have got a better result tonight, I really do. I'm not holding anything against these people. I'm for solar, I'm just not for this position, and I'm not for a lot of positions where I see solar. I haven't talked to my agricultural friends that have solar on their properties, most of them are doing it for the income, okay? But they sell their solar. They don't sell the rental land, they sell their solar with it. That's how they said they're making their money. They pay the bills, and whatever's left goes into a bank, and they can sell it and make money off it. So this is things that we don't know, and they're not telling us, and I think it's wrong. But there's nothing we can do about it tonight. I think everybody here has done a great job, the students, the neighbors, everything. You voice your opinion, that's all we can do as a government, as people down here. We have to trust our politicians to do the right job. And I think, back in January sixth that happened, I think America was speaking up that we're upset with what's going on in this country. And I'm just going to take that as a big situation, but this little situation, you gave it a chance to talk, I've talked to you personally, Mr. Collins, I know you're running again, I never met you, Mr. Shea, but these are decisions that you've got to make, okay? And I tell you, I would love to say that this is a legal meeting tonight, but it's not, because you can have a meeting, but I think you guys were wrong for not having questions and answers. I think if you ask that stuff, air it all out, then you can move forward and make a decision that's right. I'm not against these guys and what they're doing, they've got to make money, they're in a business. You've got to do business and make money, am I right? You wouldn't get solar if they didn't make money. And by the way, you guys, all the solar money they're spending, you're putting it in your electric bill. Look at your electric bill. Every electric bill has two dollars and thirty-one cents. There's six million people in my zone, I asked it on my solar, six million people are paying two dollars and sixty-one cents a month, and that going, all the solar that you see going out. You're paying for it. The government ain't doing much paying, they're making the money. So, you know, it's what you've got to look at as a business end of it, you guys. And I think that's what these guys got to do. They were trying to get out of the debt and bringing more income to the county, and I know where you're coming from. It's not easy, we've got to do something. But I don't think that's the answer. I know one thing Norfolk did implement, I was at it for years, to charge each out-of-county student, we charged twenty-four-five, I paid for it. I lived here for four years, so my town had to pay for me to live in here. It was great, you know, and it was a great education. But now we don't have that dorm anymore, but they got to find another source on this. And I don't think this is the right way. If you told me you're going to bring in a hundred-and-fifty thousand or two-hundred-thousand with solar, boy, I'd be on the borderline with that one, because I'd say, now you're doing a good job. I don't think the business deal is right, that's my opinion, that's why I'm here tonight, and I don't, I'm not for cutting down any trees. I'm a landscaper, I don't cut any trees unless they got to come down. And we're going to be losing a lot of trees in the next ten years, because this change of weather is, maples are going left and right right now, we can't stop the, and we got more insects. As it gets warmer, we're going to have more and more insects coming in, destroying trees. They have a moth they're worried about right now, it's already in New Jersey, it's coming this way. So we're going to be losing a lot more trees. But the thing somebody didn't say tonight, carbon dioxide, yes, you're going to load up with solar, load it, but one thing you can't do, produce oxygen. Trees produce oxygen. Plants, plants in your house produce oxygen. That's important. Every plant you can, why did the city plant more trees? To clean out the air and produce more oxygen. And my other thing is, real quick, and I'm sorry, Mr. Shea, but solar panels is my concern with you guys, and I'm just learning more, and I'm going to tell you a statement, we do not, as Americans, as people of this world, know enough about solar and car-generated batteries. Chevy just had a load of cars show up in New Quincy. Every one of the batteries were taken out of their cars and put in a storage facility over in Quincy Shipyard. They don't know what to do with the damn batteries, they're burning up. What do you do with them? Town of Norwell had a fire from one of the cars. They are looking for an enclosed box, so if this happens again, they can plug the car in there, because they couldn't put the fire out. So these are things that we don't know about, you guys, that we're going to learn as we go along, just like raising a kid. It's one of the hardest things in the world to do, how do you raise a kid? We've got to take every day different. You don't know what one's going to do. Same with this, this is all new to us. All these solar panels are new. And he can't, Mr. Shea can't come out and say what's going to happen in twenty years, he can't. I can't answer what's going to happen in twenty years. The guy that brought it up is that there should be something in place after twenty years? What's going to happen? Absolutely. You've got to have something in place, so after twenty years, what are we going to do? Yep, what are we going to do? Sir, I really appreciate that, I really appreciate. Mr. Shea, always thank you for your time. But I'm against it, and I wish somebody would speak against it, I wish one of you guys would speak and give us some more information.
Joining in, Dan.
Mr. Shea, would you please introduce all the county commissioners? I'm not sure if we are the all-star.
I did it at the LCET, I'll be happy to do it again, I'm Joe Shea, the chairman. My writers, Richard Stady and Tom Cannon. Commissioner, Peter Collins from the town of Milton.
Do you remember me? We were in the Norfolk County Selectment Association Board. I was a selectman here in Walpole, mid-nineteen-eighties to mid-nineteen-nineties, along with Bill Hamilton. I think you've got to listen to all the good people here in Walpole. We, this means so much to us. I thought very about it, but now I'm older, I don't have quite the strength I used to have. So please have a good case. I was on the local, Bill Hamilton, Will Ripley. We tried to rezone the Norfolk County area to park and recreation and something else. We tried to solve the whole problem now, but the Norfolk County Commissioners came forward with a plan to build a housing development, so we backed up. We wanted to keep this all park, recreation, preservation. I'm sorry that didn't happen, I'm sorry we were in this position yesterday. Now, you expect all the good people, they have said all I can say to them. Really, really, really good. Hope that you will look deep in your hearts and do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Pete Depaska, I live at fifteen Beethoven Avenue in Walpole. I don't live in this neighborhood, I live on the other side of town. So this doesn't really directly affect me, but it does. And what I see here is just troubling me. So I feel like I wanted to speak about it. I did talk about this last time, at the last public hearing, and I brought in my experience as an environmental sustainability professional, and I'd like to expand on that if I can. I wanted to talk about the four goals of this project, right? Number one is to reduce energy costs, right? I believe this is the sole reason for it. It's really just all about the finances. I know in your opening remarks, you only talked about the finances and the cost. There was really no expanded discussion on renewable energy, on carbon footprint, on the curriculum. There was just no mention of that, it was all about the finances. I wanted to touch upon the twenty-year lease, right? They say that there's a twenty-year lease. What's going to happen at the end of twenty years? It'll probably be renewed. So I don't think, don't have in your heads that these solar panels are going to go away in twenty years. The lease probably has a clause in it that you can renew it, and then those solar panels will stay. I want to talk about the next two goals, promoting renewable energy and reducing carbon footprint. There's nothing on the county website about what your total current carbon footprint is. So this may reduce the carbon footprint by one thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine tons of CO2, but what's the percentage in county-wide? There's nothing about that. If you're truly interested in reducing your carbon footprint, the way that you reduce it is, I said in the last time, is you reduce your energy consumption. That reduces the amount of energy you use, that reduces your cost. That's the first step. Second step is you electrify as much as you can. You get away from fossil fuels and you go to electricity, like replacing gas-fired boilers with electric boilers, or providing electric heat in buildings. Number three is then, once you electrify everything, you provide that electricity with renewable energy, either on-site or by purchasing it. So what you're doing here is that you're skipping those first two steps. That's the very important part here, you're skipping those first two steps. And other people have said, well, what else could the county be doing, instead of trying to reduce their energy costs here, or doing something in sustainability? So I have a copy of the fiscal 2023 Norfolk County capital plan. I can tell you what the county's got planned. There's six boiler projects. Rantham District Court Building, a gas boiler is being put in to replace an oil-fired boiler. That's two hundred thousand dollars. Stoughton District Court, gas boiler, two hundred thousand dollars. There's another gas boiler at the Brookline District Court. Another boiler project here, Aggie, at the Admin Building. At the Admin Plant Science Building, a new boiler, seven hundred thousand dollars. And then at one-twenty-five Fisher Street here, another boiler project. What you should be doing is not investing in gas-fired technology for the long haul, these boilers are going to, you're going to have these boilers for decades, and you're locking yourself into this technology when you should be locking yourself into electrifying and then getting renewable energy, but you need to electrify first. And I would say that is where you need to be putting your energy and your money, is, like someone else said, having a county-wide plan. Fourth reason is the grade nine-to-twelve curriculum. That's just dressing, really. You know, you have the solar panels in a parking lot, that's enough to have a curriculum for solar panels. So I hope that you can take these comments to heart, and I do agree, you really need a county-wide plan. I'm against this here, it's not the right spot, and there's plenty of opportunity elsewhere on the county-owned properties to reduce your energy costs, your consumption, and your carbon footprint.
Thomas J. Schneider, please.
Time's up already, yeah. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Got a couple of different versions here, so I'll do my best. My name's Tom, Tom Schneider. I live at forty-one Clark Avenue in Walpole. Been here since ninety-six with my spouse, Gretchen, hi Gretchen, and we raised a couple of kids here, okay? We're all, we're tree huggers, we drive hybrids. Politically, we're libertarian, let's say. I'm a member of Epiphany Parish, a mason, and importantly, I'm on the Walpole Trails Committee. I hike, bike, and cross-country ski, as do members of my family, a lot, in all our green spaces, the town forest, around, you know, back here in the corner where this thing is supposed to go. I care about this town, I think we all care about this town. So I'm vehemently opposed to the project, I think, for three main reasons. The first is, as I mentioned, I'm a tree hugger. Trees are coming down, right? So I'm a scientist by trade, I assure you, I get the one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven acres worth of carbon sink, et cetera, but these are our trees, okay? They're not icons on a slide, they're our trees that are coming down. And once they're gone, they're gone, okay? They're not going to come back. So I would encourage you to read your John Muir, and put these things on the roof of a mall somewhere. Fifteen people must have said this, so I'm just reiterating what's been said before. Solar technology is changing rapidly, right? Moore's Law states that every eighteen months, computing power will double, okay? That's why the cell phone in your pocket's going to be obsolete in two years. I suspect the same is true of solar technology. So I asked the board, you know, why would you cut down these trees to generate the amount of electricity that in five years we'll get from an array the size of a dinner napkin? It's just, it doesn't make, it doesn't make sense, I don't see sort of the long-term plan. With regard to the acreage, the how many trees, the thirty, the seven acres, the four acres, it's really not about how many trees or how much space looked at in isolation, right? It's about the fact that, you know, green space in Walpole is a treasure, it's a gem. And our town is unique, I think, among South area, South Shore towns. As was alluded to before, you know, young professionals are coming here in droves to high-density housing. Why? Because they don't believe in one acre per two people, right? They want to all live together and preserve green space. They're coming here for those reasons, and they'll leave if that goes away. So, you know, do recognize that that asset is huge, it's a lot more than the thirty-one-point-five-k sort of chump change that's already been mentioned. So let's not lose that advantage, okay? These few acres are part of what makes Walpole attractive to so many, keeps a lot of us here, and is a draw. And, you know, the tax dollars that come in from all that must be worth a ton. So again, against it, trees are coming down, not for that. Solar technology is advancing so rapidly, to me, it seems not worth it. And then again, you know, lastly, the green space is a draw, especially with young people, and as Aileen mentioned earlier, people either won't come, or they'll leave this town if these sorts of things continue to happen. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Peter Kane, one forty-nine Ellis Street, Westwick. I'm a teacher here, I teach environmental science here at the Aggie. As you can tell, my voice is shot, so I've asked Evan McClellan to read my statement.
Sir, all I need is your name and address.
All right. Name and address?
Sure.
All right. So my name is Evan McClellan, I live at six-oh-four High Street, Old Massachusetts, I go to school here, I'm going to be a senior. And Mr. Kane has given me three quick points to outline for this project. So the first point is that we are supposed to be an agricultural high school, not a nature preserve. Yes, this project does involve cutting down trees, but, you know, ninety-four percent of our forested area on campus will be untouched. The benefits far outweigh the drawbacks, including six percent of our woods, especially since those woods are neither contiguous, old growth, or biologically diverse. A significant portion of the proposed area is currently a rather unsettling dump. The hayride route and cross-country course will only require minor changes, and the walking path to the woods will stay the same. Point two, there have been comments made that there are no additional educational benefits offered by this project, since we already have solar installations on campus. That statement completely ignores the fact this is truly an agricultural project, not just a solar project. The Massachusetts Department- The Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources requires this project to involve cultivation of crops under the panels and will also require us to collaborate with the UMass Center for Agriculture, Food, and the Environment around planning and ongoing research. Our school mission statement says, quote, "It is our mission to offer progressive agricultural education," unquote. Can you think of a better hands-on agricultural learning experience for our students? Point three: On an annual basis, Norfolk Aggie is responsible for the emissions of approximately 2.5 million pounds of CO2, which is 1,270 tons of CO2, as a result of us burning natural gas, heating oil, gasoline, diesel fuel, and using electricity from the grid. The Aggie needs to align with federal and state efforts to drastically reduce those emissions. If this project does not go forward, how else are we going to do so? If everyone says, "I'm all for solar, but not in my backyard," nothing will get done, and our kids will suffer the consequences. So, please vote to proceed this project. It will be good for our students, good for the environment, and good for the school.
This exhausts the written portion of people that signed in.
There's more signatures tabled.
Okay. Maybe it's a good time to read the people that we've heard from. We have other documentation here, but... All right, no, no, we'll go back to Val Stone, please, Val.
Hi, Val Stone, Norfolk, Massachusetts. So, hi, everyone. My name is Val. I have a unique position here. I graduated from this school, and now I teach here. I am also a farmer, and I've farmed for over a decade. I absolutely hate change. I hate change so much. I also love trees and nature. Ask any of my friends, any of my students, they'll probably tell you that I'm a tree hugger. I literally hug trees. I know most of the scientific names of our local trees and their ecological roles. I love nature more than most people. I have made my career teaching youth about the environment and agriculture. I volunteer on my town's Conservation Commission, and I plan on spending at least six months hiking the Appalachian Trail. I'm probably more passionate about trees and nature than most of the people in this room. That said, I fully support the solar project with the conditions that this company says that they will deliver. This will give my students tremendous opportunity to see agro-voltaics in the fields and conduct studies with UMass Amherst, one of the leading institutions in this subject. How many high schools get to say that? This is what many farms are currently doing, and we need to stay up to date with the current technology. I bring my students outside a lot. We use the outdoors as my main classroom. I can tell you the spot the solar panels are going. My students do not get much educational benefit from that site currently. The sites currently are hayfields and a pine plantation, and the pine plantation was meant to be cut and harvested. With the agro-voltaics, my class would be able to increase our class time in that area with new lessons to meet the frameworks. As someone's with a master's in sustainable agriculture, there are many lessons that I will be able to create. The school would increase agricultural fields and production. We will be able to install pollinator gardens, graze small livestock, increase hay production, and add crops. I am excited that my students will get this opportunity. Many people here are upset with this project. I, at first, was. But these are far from the original plans that were not originally reviewed by our professionals here and our locals in the community. Communication is important. It seems that their door has been opened just a little bit. I know some neighbors are upset about the look of them, and I'm sorry. I hope the company is able to screen them for you. Overall, though, this is a school. My student learning will be a priority. My final point is, we don't have time to argue about this anymore. We need to offset our carbon emissions with renewables. It takes a lot of privilege for a majority of the people in this room to complain about how something looks and not even consider the positive impacts that it will bring. My generation, my students' generation, and the upcoming generations are the ones that'll be facing climate change head-on. My and younger generations feel hopeless about the future. We feel hopeless because of meetings like this, where people don't see or care, and that we need to act now. They only really care about their needs and their gains. I am hoping the school will give the youngest generation just a little bit of hope that the Aggie and the county actually care about the current and future of our climate. Thank you.
Luke Burns, please.
Luke Burns, 2 Hillside Road, Plainville, Mass. Class of 2016, current Aggie faculty, as of three years now. I will be short because, as many preceding me have had the same points to make, I am also with them. I stand now only to reiterate many points have already been said. I feel the solar project detracts from the true mission of the school and ignores the entrance and voices of the students and the families here. We educate students and appreciate what nature represents. We offer to support white protection and support for the wildlife, understand agriculture, and understand how to be good stewards of the natural world around us. Cutting down and clearing land of a healthy forest is not responsible stewardship. It's not the proper way to care for the land that we manage on this campus. Everything else I've made has been said better by people more prepared than I have, but I respect everyone who has made their point so far. Thank you, guys, for all coming out. Thank you for making your voices heard. Having the people present is the most important part of this evening. Thank you, guys.
Demetria Sullivan, please.
Good evening. Excuse me. I did not plan on speaking this evening. My name is Demetria Sullivan, and I live at 299 Riverside Drive in Dedham, Massachusetts, and I currently serve on the Dedham Select Board. I am not here as a member of the Select Board. I am here as a resident of Dedham. I found it very interesting what everybody had to say. I've been paying attention to this, and I think that you have an issue sitting in front of you. I know I've been told that you said that you had 60 days to take a vote. Can you keep the hearing open? I'm just curious. Do you have to close it? You don't have to answer it right now. You can look into that, right? I think you can keep it open and maybe then ask the people. Maybe put a non-binding question on the ballot. This is pretty big. And again, I'm here as a resident, and what I've heard, there are a lot of people here. My daughter, I'm kind of skipping around because I didn't plan on speaking, and Tara, I am just like you. I don't like speaking in public, believe it or not. Anyway, my daughter has a degree in geology, environmental science, and sustainability, and she's been looking at this. And she keeps on saying, "Green initiatives shouldn't compete with each other." So, what's the profound reason for doing it? There are other places that wouldn't compete. Seems like if people are speaking to you, I would take the time to listen to what they have to say, because you represent them. Thank you very much.
This is the second public hearing we've had on this particular subject, as it's presented on this particular project. We need to close this public hearing tonight. We had other informational meetings held at school prior to the last one, four or five weeks ago, and some of you folks were there.
That wasn't open to everyone.
So, we are under the law, Chapter 34, Section 14, and the law is specific in the formulation of the digs. We come under some criticism for taking too long. Other times, people don't think we've done enough or taken long enough. We're going to follow the law.
So, what does that subsection say?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
That Chapter 34 section, what does it say?
Well, it talks about the rules of this public hearing.
Read it.
And we're trying to keep to it.
Read it.
No, real quick, stop. You can't demand a hearing. The attorney said he made the rule.
Yeah. Come over there.
Don't start back and forth, but you've been doing great, and, you know, we haven't done yet. We have some written correspondence, and I don't know that people on Zoom. We have people on Zoom that want to speak, and I'm going to go to the people on Zoom and then the written correspondence. Go ahead.
Three, Mr. Chairman. If anyone on Zoom would like to give a public comment, if they could raise their hand or indicate so in the chat, we will recognize you.
I would like to speak, but I don't really know how.
Give your name and address.
Okay. My name is Olivia Cohen. I live at 27 Bubbling Brook Road. I've lived here for 30 years, and I would like to voice my concerns for why I think the county should not grant a lease to Kearsage Energy. Number one, technology. Technology is infamous for its rapid obsolescence. There's already new technology for smaller and more efficient panels, and the software to run the panels also changes very rapidly. The hardware and software will become outdated and susceptible to attacks, causing the system to shut down, resulting in loss of power and loss of revenue. I ask you, will you be keeping your cellphone for 20 years? The second point is location. It is inefficient, inappropriate, and unnecessary to use pristine farmland for solar panels. Other sites more suitable are available. There is no other site like North Street in the town or the county. Valuable woods and farmland are not being created. Once lost, it's lost forever. The third point is education. The so-called education portion of this project is a last-minute ploy to make a sale. Kearsage is not in the business of education and is not an education organization. Also, the school on its own could provide those courses. They do not need Kearsage for that. My final point is aesthetic. There is not a more beautiful sight than the fields on North Street. Every season is picture-perfect. The fields of North Street have, for hundreds of years, been a defining identity for the entire area. I don't want to lose such irreplaceable beauty. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on the Zoom?
This is on Fisher Street, North Street. Yes, Bill?
Looks like that's it.
Okay. I'm now going to go to Commissioner Staley, who's going to read into the record some correspondence received prior to this meeting.
Okay. Now, Mr. Chairman, for the interest of time, I'm going to just note the person, in most cases, did not supply their address. We have an email address and a statement. They will be entered into the record, though, as part of the record for the testimony for the hearing. We have an email from Anna Mitchell. The email was dated Sunday, August 28th, written to the commissioner. The commissioner's office subject solar panel, and Anna Mitchell wants to go on record as being against the cutting of the trees and against the project for environmental reasons. That's the summary of the subject's only. That will be entered in. The second email we got was from M.A. McMorrow. That's Mary Alice McMorrow. Sunday night, August 28th, in the afternoon. Again, the subject, Aggie School Solar. Mary Alice McMorrow is against the project and would urge us to examine other alternative areas for most solar panels. We have an email from Brandon Bale. Again, no address given. Email was dated Sunday, August 28th, 11:40 in the morning. And Brandon Bale is asking us, in his email to us, that we please reconsider any decisions to move forward for a number of reasons. Sites, different things like the trails and the hayrides of that nature, which were tonight. And I think the law, no, two more. An email from Anthony Indiana Fucci. Again, no address provided. What is the email?
Walden Drive.
Oh, okay. All right. Walden Drive. Go for the record. They are opposing the project. They've spoken to many people in the community about it. And again, referencing a letter to our director proponent, who was a concern about not knowing about it, but they know about it now. And again, they are against this project. And I have one more email. Mr. Chairman, Alan Marshall, who did give an address, 318 Fisher Street, Walpole. Alan is disappointed in the proposed project at the Norfolk Aggie High School, believes there's other alternatives, putting these up, and would like us to consider this project before going forward. And that's all I have.
Okay, those are part of the permanent record. They'll go into the file as everything is, and all of this being recorded. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Come on upstairs. All I need is your name and address.
Can I speak from here? I think you can hear me.
Sure.
I came here wearing one hat, but I find myself wearing a couple more. My name is Peter Bukaisen, and I'm here from 8 County Road. I represent the German Club, which is on 109. And we have bought North Street, and, you know, as you guys, we love our fields. We love the fields. We have a 10-acre parcel that we bought in 1976 and developed that, tried to keep every tree that we could. So, I feel for you guys here, because, you know, we want that, too. We're tree huggers, yet we want it to be beautiful. I came here because we thought that a lot of the trees that are near that field in the north part of North Street were going to be developed into solar fields, and also that the woods that have bought us were going to come down, and we didn't want them to come down. So, we are, I should say, I am surprised. And I'll report back to our membership next week and tell them what's happened here. But in 1976, I was the president that brought this club out here from Boston. I was a 30-year-old punk, didn't know anything. Went to the town, and they took great care of us. And we took care of them, and we've been great associates for 50 years, 48 years. And part of what we had was a dialogue. We had question and answers. That's what I was disappointed in hearing tonight, that there was not a question-and-answer portion of what's transpired here, you know? And Thomas Paine, in 1776, in his Common Sense Panel, it's common sense. That's what I asked that you guys look into.
Any, I'm sorry, Commissioner Staley.
I'd like to say a couple of things, if I could. First of all, I can't get into lengthy comments because we have said the ground rules were to listen tonight, and that's what we're doing, all right? We're listening. Some are saying it's a done deal's foolishness. Those who know me would know that and say that. It's not a done deal. We've got to listen. Secondly, I think some of the issues, like what happens when the project is done and other items, we're forgetting something. This is only one step in the process, all right? If the commissioners and trustees vote to move forward, they then have to go to the zoning board of Walpole, and that's a whole different process, where there would be a hearing, and then you had a special permit, a site plan approved. And at that board, my experience as a zoning attorney tells me that that board, if they were to grant it, would put conditions such as decommissioning and things of that sort. They would make them both the bonds, all right? So, some of the questions you're asking, they're well-intentioned, they're good questions. No disrespect to anybody, but you're getting ahead of the game, all right? You're just getting ahead a little bit. You're asking good questions, you're being respectful, you shouldn't be shaking your head, and the same. We're going forward, yes or no, is what we are doing. That's our decision. If we don't vote it, then we don't go further. But if it goes further, the Board of Appeal, initiating the permit, would be the one that also have an opportunity in reviewing it and petitioning to look at those questions there. I think this was a good meeting. I want to salute everyone for coming. Thank you all for your input. Obviously, it's very valuable, and we would liberate on it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay.
Am I able to add one thing? Just take those 30 seconds.
Last call, who's still in here?
Again, my name is Nathan Zara Sana, 681 Street. Just wanted to add, I know we kept going back to the original views and LOIs. I do have copies of all those. Nowhere in there was the Aggie originally on them. Idea was crossed, even on North Street, wasn't even at the Hilltop location, was across the street. There really isn't much in there for decommissioning. Well, there's nothing in there for educational purposes, even on the letters that the county and Kearsage, with Kearsage's letter back to the superintendent of the school. There really isn't anything in there regarding... There really isn't anything in there regarding educational benefit. Mightily, it's all just a way to make it sound better to get votes. Vote yes on this. Again, I don't think there's much of an educational benefit. I have letters and stuff to back it up.
Last call, public comment. Not having you previously spoke, I'll get to you though, sir. This lady here, I don't believe spoke people.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hamali. I live in Walpole, and I have an abutting property next to the field that you are proposing. So I know a lot of people on the table have seen me before. I have been with you guys, coming to all public hearings, along with my neighbors. We had two public hearings before this, and I know this is the second or the third one, but, but we still don't have our questions answered. We did have a small session, which was just the 10 people who are immediately in the neighborhood. We had a small session, but I was asked not to make it public, because it was only for me and the neighbors that were connecting with you guys off the record. So we still, after all this is said and done, we still have questions that are not answered. The reason we keep bringing up the concern is because we have been told that after you have public meeting or a public hearing, as you explained earlier in your opening comment, you have to vote within 60 days. And that, that begins the concern again. We keep coming to the public hearings, we keep seeing the same slides, a little shift in here and there in the field, but the questions we have still remain unanswered. It's not my questions, it's the public's questions. You met with me separately, that's great, I appreciate that. Did we get everything followed up from that email or from that meeting? No. We had asked you to show us evidence that you have looked at all 12 sites and done the evaluation before you landed on deciding the Norfolk County space, I mean, the Aggie space. We don't know that information still. We had asked to say that if you can work and with the students, and if you had done survey of the students and the teachers, and you said yes, well, today evidently, we have many students here, and apparently it's not done. And if it is done, I would like to see that evidence. So we keep coming, but there is, there is still, still no follow-up from what we ask you. And today, again, we are told within 60 days you have a voting window to go forward or not. The question still remains, where are we coming together again to have the question-and-answer session? Because if this is all you have, and now you go and make the decision, what about our questions? When are, when is public? When are we going to come back together to ask you the questions that we still have to figure out?
Okay. Okay. I said I wasn't going to do this, but, wait a minute, I want to answer somebody's question. I'm going to call on our General Counsel, Scott Lopez, who has a comment. In general, go ahead. Scott.
My name is Scott Lopez, I'm from Sharon, Massachusetts. So when we went forward on the North Street project, we executed on January 15th.
Could you stand at the microphone, please?
Just speak up a little bit?
Don't call me on the date, but I think it was January 15th, 2021. We, the county, with respect to the North Street property, which is not at issue here tonight, executed an, an energy management services agreement. That's a matter of public record. It's also an exhibit in the lawsuit that the Walpole Preservation Society sued the county and attached it as an exhibit. Questions like decommissioning are in there. Questions like posting a bond are in there. Questions about the length of, of the, of the lease are in there. Many of the issues that you're raising are not based on the facts of what exists today. And so I would urge you all, those who are truly seeking answers, to go to those public records and read them. Because this project we've been working on for five years, we've run it by the Department of Energy. They've approved our energy management services agreement before we entered into a lease for North Street with Kearsage. And now that's in litigation because the zoning department refused to grant us a permit. So we've been trying for the last five years to work with the town of Walpole and work with the community and work with the Board of Selectmen and work with the Zoning Board of Appeals to move this project forward, because solar energy is the future. And if we really want to save this planet, we need to go down that road, okay? So, so I, I just, all I want to say is, a lot of the questions that you are, are asking are already in the public record.
Everything you just said is irrelevant, that the taxpayers don't want this project.
Attorney, one question, you set those tracks we're looking for in that lease, is that lease that you signed also with this, is that the same?
Yeah, they're separate.
Or is that a separate?
It's a separate.
So we don't have that, you're saying that's for North Street, but it's not for Norfolk County? Am I right?
Correct. Because before a lease can be signed or negotiated, we had to have this public hearing.
I have a question. When was the last time you had an open question-and-answer session about this, this land that we are talking about?
Never. That was publicly broadcasted.
This is a public hearing pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 34, Section 14.
I agree.
It requires to have a hearing in the city or town and to hear from the public.
Got it.
It is not a question-and-answer hearing.
My question is, when was the last time you had an open, public, and a public comments session, where people can ask questions and receive answers? When was the last time you had such a session for this proposed land?
It's not required by laws.
So never.
That's not the question.
So you don't care?
That is not my question.
You're going to save the earth, but not give me answers.
As they say in court, answer the question you were asked.
It's not that we don't care, it's that we're following the law.
Okay, so you just said before that you don't have that date because it's not required. You just said that.
I said we haven't had an open question-and-answer period for the public because it's not required under the law.
Well, why can you say that?
Okay, one sec. So, so, so to the answer to my question is, that it's, you don't have this. You have not had an open, public question-and-answer session.
Every one of these public hearings, we have posted the answers to the questions that were asked these public hearings. Where? On the website.
Hold on.
It was like five, one sec. I'm sorry.
But that is not the session that I'm not speaking of.
One person's speaking.
Put the hammer down.
With all due respect to everyone in this room, this is why question-and answering is not required for the public hearing, because Kearsage has represented facts to you, and you have denied that those facts are accurate without any basis.
Hold on.
Okay? And so having a question-and-answer hearing would just be more of the same. They'd answer a question, and you would say, oh, I don't agree with you, or I don't believe you. We're here, commissioners are here, to listen to your points of view.
Joe Shea said it's set sail already. When, last time we met with him, he said the ship is set sail. So what do we do then? That was his exact words, wasn't it?
The ship has never set sail.
Well, tell him, he's the one that said it repeatedly to us. The ship is set sail, you said it repeatedly.
Who? Without, without getting into the...
Joe Shea said it to us. You were at the meeting, you were on Zoom.
Yes, yes, Mr. Shea, you did say that.
And, oh, I think it was recorded, we can bring it up if you'd like.
Certainly was recorded.
Yep, and it was certainly said repeatedly.
The Board of County Commissioners are three. The Board can't act unless two vote in favor of action.
So I completely understand.
Until that happens, there is no decision. So no, no, no one county commissioner can say it's a done deal.
Well, he did. He did. And it's public record. He said it repeatedly.
Hold on. So I want to go back to, I understand.
So, well, no, he wasn't confused. He said it.
I didn't say he was confused.
Well, whatever you said, he said it. That tells us it's a done deal, so why are you bothering?
So if I can...
Oh, stop it, will ya?
This, this is the proof of why we don't have a question-and-answer.
Yeah, oh, no, that's not it, because I'm not asking a question.
So if I go back to my original question, when was the last time you had a question-and-answer session about this? You said it is not required. So are we, are you doing only what's required? Because you are not required to hear us, you are not required to listen to us.
Have you answered your question?
I don't think you have, sir.
And I think I have.
This lady here, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm just speaking more towards this gentleman.
Yeah.
I'm Lita. I'm an Anna County alumni of the school, daughter of the president of the alumni, a student of former faculty. And I love the school. I love these grounds. I live in Norton, Mass., so it's at least a half hour away. And I always come to the school, even on my days off, I would come just to travel the trails, especially in 2020, when all the craziness happened, and I've had a lot of death in that year, and so much, you know, builds up with all that. I would come here, even if it's just to sit in the soccer fields or walk the trails out back. I would work the hard-to-hay ride my senior year of 2015. You know, I don't know, you know, excuse my French jack shit about politics, but I do know that the taxpayers on the land, not the government. But what I...
Mr. Shea, I would like to direct a question to counsel, if I may.
Sure.
You made this statement, and I understand it, that you are not required, that the commissioners are not required to hold a, a public question-and-answer. I understand that. Is there anything in the law that prevents the commissioners from holding that?
Let me think about that one.
The statute that this hearing is being held states that there has to be a public hearing. It does not state that there has to be a question-and-answer period.
Good answer. We're paying our salary. I, I, it's, but, but let me rephrase my question. I, I understand what you have just said, but that didn't answer my question.
But, but it did.
Why don't you answer his question?
I'll try it one more time.
Ask the question again.
If the statute said there has to be an open meeting with questions and answers, we would have had an open meeting with questions and answers. We follow the text of the statute. That's how you follow the law.
But the statute prohibit a question-and-answer.
By implication, it does.
No, it doesn't.
No, no.
We are.
It doesn't require it.
It doesn't require it, it just prohibits.
Save that resolution.
We can't be speaking out. I thought we were doing a great job. You're doing a great job.
Yep, ship's sailed.
The ship is sailed, don't worry.
Does the statute say you can wear a red tie? And if it doesn't say you can, you can't wear one. Can you wear one?
Yeah. Answer it.
Bill Hamilton. I go by William because I'm on the ballot as William. You're 60 days out. Then I understand you must have made a legal decision on who is going to be responsible for any cleanup. Is it going to be Kearsage? Is it going to be the county? Is it going to be the school? Is it going to be us taxpayers? I've been through this with Apple Tree Lane. I had to track that gasoline leak from 109 to Apple Tree Lane. And Exxon, was then Esso, I believe, said that the footprint at the wells, the private wells at Apple Tree Lane was not the same as the footprint of the molecule at the gas station. Would take us three years to resolve that, who was responsible. What I did was I signed with two other selectmen, an easement across agricultural school property to get a water line up to Apple Tree Lane, because the state had bulldozers ready to tear down those homes. You could smell the gasoline when you walked in the buildings. And because I signed that lease, it was illegal for me to take by eminent domain an easement across county property, because it was public property. And the then-sitting county commissioners did their damnedest to put me in the can. I almost went to Walpole Prison for violating that law. And thank God, we, we went before the State Supreme Court, not a county court, not a general court, the State Supreme Court. And they showed us mercy and that we had to do what we had to do. So us three selectmen were let off the hook. Now, who is going to be responsible? Now, I'm very familiar with what's going on with the pollution at school Meadow Brook. Now, what's happened there is Baker Hughes bought Bird Machine. They should have just bought the, the, what do you call it? Forget it, but they bought the property. They didn't have to buy the property. Now, Kearsage is not buying the property, they're leasing it. Can a leasing walk away if it's contaminated after they get through? Are you stuck with it if it's contaminated after they get through? Do you have an agreement, a legal agreement, locking in Kearsage? Now, we have a...
I will represent to you that the lease will contain provisions, if in fact the lease is executed. The lease will provide, have provisions, which will require decommissioning and removal of all the solar panels and returning the property back to its natural state when Kearsage...
That's not what I'm asking. I'm saying, will you clean up? If, if one of these hurricanes that they're talking about hits us, some of these panels get disrupted, some of that hazardous material ends up on the ground, and by circulation of air or water, it's carried into our Zone 2 water supply, and now we have to get it out or we have to treat it.
They would be required to maintain the premises during the lease.
During the lease? But what, but what happens if we don't, if the contamination doesn't arrive at the wellheads in Mine Brook until 35 years? Then you are going to be responsible. And you know what? We can lift the veil of frauds, you're familiar with that, and we can go after people individually, you guys, for being negligent in not having protected us taxpayers. So you better consider that, because we're becoming aware of our rights to lift the veil of frauds. Thank you.
It might be helpful to close by saying, Kearsage is going to put out an FAQ based on the notes they took this evening. And I think I also would ask for share to have Mr. Buckley also generate our own list of notes, because someone said, why are we doing questions and answers? It can't be hit hard, it can get difficult, but we're listening. We've got the questions, a whole bunch that I wrote down, other people wrote down, and we do our best to get those answers out on the website as soon as possible. Fair enough. So we're not going to not ignore what you say. We'll review it, that's our job. We'll write down our responses as best we can. Kearsage is going to have an FAQ. I don't know how quick we'll put it out, but that will be out on that website as well. Right, was that right? You all listened, or not?
Well, we'll go on your website, we'll hand it out soon then.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Okay, can you publish in the local papers where we can find these comments, so everybody in town will know, not just us?
No, they don't like to do that.
I can't answer that, but maybe put it in the Walpole paper?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we do.
Okay, we can do that.
Local paper, yeah.
Put it in local papers.
Hometown Weekly.
Hometown Weekly.
Thank you, Ray.
Yes, I spoke earlier, Steve Hearn. I heard about an energy management services agreement from January of 2021, but it was my understanding that that referenced the other property. but it was my understanding that that referenced the other property. I'm wondering how people in this room and others can learn more about it of an energy management services agreement that references the current property. Is that something that you will post online rather than we have to find it in a lawsuit elsewhere?
If a lease is executed, it will be available on our website.
Is, is it in draft form currently?
There is a draft that was approved by DOVR before January of 2021, but there is no draft with respect to this property because no decision has been made as to whether to enter into a lease.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. We appreciate your input. And we're going to take this matter on to further advisement. Nope, we have no, okay. Do we need to close this initially? This public hearing is closed. Thank you very much.